Okay, welcome to the TC Palm Editorial Board meeting to interview candidates for Indian River County Commissioner District 5. I'm Larry Reesman, columnist and community editor. And I'm joined by fellow editorial board members Adam Neal, who's our news director, Gil Smart, a columnist, and Terry Slitt, a reader advisory board member. We also expect Louise Philippine and other advisory board member to join us soon. I'll lead the questioning and open it up to other editorial board members at the end. Adam will direct the video coverage, and if we get questions from our social media audience, they're watching, they may be watching on YouTube and Facebook. Adam might decide to pose one or two questions at the end of the session from the public. I really appreciate the fact that you guys filled out those questionnaires that really streamlined this process. We've all read them, and hopefully we won't ask redundant questions. We'll start off with, you know, with questions for you guys. There'll be no opening statement. We'll give you an opportunity at the end if you have anything you'd like to add. By the way, your answers to those questionnaires can be found at tcpalm.com/elections, along with other stories, videos, and information about the August 18 election. At the conclusion of the interview, the editorial board members will discuss possibly writing editorial to recommend a candidate in the race. We've got several questions for you and might end up having more of a conversation than just a simple Q and A. We don't, you know, really have any time limits or anything. We just expect you to keep your answers concise, just like when you're on the dais, you'll have to determine what that means and be respectful of others. So we'll start the questions with Bob. First question is, when was the last time you changed your mind on a political issue? Please explain when, when and what it was, and how it happened.
Well, I think there's one right now that we're all involved with, and that is the coronavirus situation. In the, in the beginning, I was not in favor of doing mandatory masks, but now I'm moving a little away from that viewpoint. Two weeks ago, the number of coronavirus positive cases in the county stood at 457, and yesterday was at 969. And what I'm also concerned about is there is only nine ICU beds available in the county as of this morning. So even though I've observed more mask usage in the last week or so as cases have climbed, there still needs more to potentially be done. So if, for example, the COVID, the COVID infection curve doesn't reverse course, I'm thinking maybe we have to look at potentially giving noncriminal warnings as an education tool for those who are not wearing masks in situations where social distancing really isn't possible. And that is something where I'm moving in terms of potentially changing my mind. We all have to realize the country is really under attack, just as it was at Pearl Harbor after 9/11. So, you know, I believe that real patriots wear masks if they cannot social distance, and they need to do it voluntarily. So that's one issue right now that I'm thinking about changing my mind.
Thank you, Bob. Steve, when was the last time you changed your mind on a political issue? Please explain when and what it was and how it happened.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say I agree with Bob regarding the coronavirus. And I think that, you know, at first I was a little hesitant to work on restricting what went on because I firmly believe that everybody should be responsible for policing themselves. As I've always said to people, you know, if you go into a business and you don't feel safe, you have the right to leave. And if you go into a business and they don't feel you're acting safe, they have the right to ask you to leave. But I do agree that, you know, we may need to take one more step to help people understand that they need to practice social distancing.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Laura, when was the last time you changed your mind?
You know, in my case, it was in my capacity as Vice Mayor of the City of Barrow Beach. And I was not alone in changing my mind. It actually was the entire city council, which voted unanimously. And I'm referring to the emergency order that was granted to the city manager, and that was several months ago, when this COVID crisis began. And then about a month or so ago, we, we ended that emergency order because it seemed, as we all know, it seemed to be leveling off, and it seemed that we had it under control. However, that being said, last Tuesday, a week ago today, City Council, Barrow Beach City Council, had an emergency, you know, special call meeting. And at that meeting, we passed an emergency order that mandated masks in the city-owned properties, for example, Leisure Square, the Community Center, City Hall, any, any properties that we own that we can control. And we also strongly encouraged wearing masks in commercial and retail establishments. You know, strongly encourage it as, as an educational tool too, to urge people to be safe and be careful. So that was done, you know, as a matter of public record, and I think, I think we did the right thing. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of facts, and not as many facts as we would like to have. We're being forced, we're in a new situation right now in that we are, we're required to make governmental or political decisions, if you, if you prefer, that are based on medical information that is incomplete to start and constantly changing. So, you know, I know we take it all very seriously, and I'll say that because we get a lot of emails. You know, I'm, I'm in constant contact with the community. We get, we get quite a large number of emails to City Hall with people expressing concerns. And it's not limited, it's never just limited to the city because, well, everyone lives in Barrow Beach. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. I'm going to go back and ask that question again. Y'all talked about masks, so I'm going to go back to Bob and start again with that same question. Can you, can you give me a political decision or political position that you had originally that you ended up changing, just in different issue, a different issue other than masks? And I don't need a long explanation, just, you can just talk about that issue briefly.
Well, Larry, you're kind of stumping me a little, a little, a little bit there. This was the most recent one that came, that came to the mind. I can't really recall something else right, right at this moment, so.
Okay, sounds good. Steve, you have another one that you could just, you don't have to?
Yes, I do, and the other one, of course, is a very controversial issue in the area, and that's the train. And, you know, at first I was completely against the train because of safety reasons and, you know, and disturbing the peace and the quality of life in the area. And then I realized that the train situation is like driving down the road at 45 miles an hour, obeying the speed limit, coming up to an intersection, and the light in front of you turns yellow. And you have plenty of time to get through the light, but the gentleman in front of you or the person in front of you decides to stop. You need to change your mind right away, or there's going to be dire consequences. And I realized with the train situation that the government wants it, the counties to the north want it, the counties to the south want it. And we needed to change our focus from trying to stop the train from coming to moving to a safety mode and making sure that when it does come through, we've taken every precaution that we could to make sure it's as safe as possible for the citizens, and it has the least detriment on the quality of life as a result of the train.
Thank you, Steve. How about you, Laura?
Yeah, so yeah, and by the way, I agree with what was said about the train, although Barrow Beach City Council was not involved in any of the lawsuits with regard to the train. So we didn't have an active political or legal position on that. But more recently, there's been some discussion about having a stop in Barrow Beach. And, and that, of course, is all predicated on what, what future events hold with the train. And I'm making sure that it's safe, that's our highest priority. But to get back to the question you asked, I think Leisure Square Pool was an interesting case of that last summer. And we, by the way, have our budget workshops coming up next week, Barrow Beach City Council. But last year, oh gosh, we spent less than five minutes talking about it, and then it was controversial for the next two to three months, as you may recall. I think, you know, TC Palm covered it, and thank you for that. But I think it's understanding that it's not just numbers. It's not just numbers. When you're talking about a budget, you're talking about people. And when the people came in to talk about Leisure Square Pool, I realized that for some people, it actually literally was saving their lives. I mean, people came in and told stories about illnesses and recovering from illnesses and almost equivalent to the doctor writing a prescription to use that pool. And, you know, when we come to, to understand things better, and you're not making decisions based strictly on, on the numbers, on a spreadsheet, but you're actually listening to people. And I, I did change my mind on that when I, when I, when I heard the full story. And in fact, this year, I'm trying to prevent that because we've taken an extra precaution. And by that, I mean an extra precaution in discussing it, the budget, at a previous city council meeting, which we've already done. So people have had an opportunity to express concerns before, before we get to the budget workshop, which usually is not well attended. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Appreciate that. We'll go to Steve on this first one, this next question. Please assess the county's oversight of its fire rescue division the past several years. What has been the problem and how would you solve it?
Well, I think one of the problems that they've had is they've had a tremendous amount of turnover from what I've been able to understand and study. And the reason why the turnover has taken place is because of the pay scale. And what's been happening, it seems, is that the Indian River County hires these people because they constantly need to fill spots. And after they train them and get the people to where they've had, you know, their training done and everything, then they become much more attractive to the other counties and cities. And as a result, they turn around and they get offered a higher pay. So they go to the other counties and cities. What we need to do in Indian River County is make sure that the pay scale is adjusted, and that includes the benefits, to a point where we can attract and keep quality first responders. Because my general thought is, is God bless, I hope nobody ever needs to have one, but if they do have to have a first responder come, that it's somebody who is well-trained, well-educated, knows where your house is, can get there quickly, you know, before there's more dire consequences.
Thanks, Steve. Laura, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Please assess the county's oversight of its fire rescue division the past several years. What has been the problem, and how would you solve it?
Well, it's my understanding that at least part of the problem is the pay scale, as previously mentioned. We had a similar situation in the City of Barrow Beach, and that was with the Barrow Beach Police Department, where we were, we were losing people to other surrounding areas because the pay scale was not what it should be. So I'm familiar with that scenario, and in fact, we did work to correct it to make sure that the, the pay scale was competitive and also that other, you know, benefits were provided. For example, in our case, it was college, you know, if people wanted to pursue college degrees, it's required. But we weren't, it wasn't being fully reimbursed. So there might be ancillary benefits that can be offered that also make it, you know, encourage one to stay in the position. Because the turnover becomes very costly, as we all know, and that's true probably for any location.
Okay. Want me to repeat the question?
Yeah, clearly, from best I can tell, turnover has been a issue with this department. I would take the approach that we used at the town of Indian River Shores. We did a comprehensive study of every part of compensation. It could be salaries, benefits, pension, and so forth. And what we did was, we ranked those against not only other providers here in Indian River County, but down in Brevard and in St. Lucie. And importantly, in full transparency, full open kimono, we gave that to the union here and asked them to comment on it. They corrected a couple of things that we had wrong, other situations we agreed to disagree. And then we would, and then we took a look at it to come up with what was a, what we thought was a package that everybody could agree to. You know, turnover is, is something that is very costly. The rule of thumb in the private sector is that you spend about 20% of your first year salary training somebody, and then more as you go down the line. So it's a question of pay me now or pay me later. The other thing that I would like to do as well is look at, is have a robust exit interview process. Sometimes there can be situations where pay could be a component, but other things could be a component. And the only way you find that out is by having an independent party do exit interviews, where you look at the data and see if there's other issues that are causing turnover. And I think that's extremely important. I'm a guy that believes is doing facts-based analysis. If you don't have a, a level of facts to be able to approach and fix a problem, then you're not going to be able to move forward.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, I think we're just going to start with Laura on this next one. Everyone seems to want to be a fiscal conservative. Please give up to three examples. You don't have to give an explanation of why, of things you view as being on the chopping block in the first county budget you see.
Well, I don't, I don't know that anything necessarily needs to be chopped. I would look more toward adjusting it, perhaps. And my priorities would be making sure that anything that's COVID-related, which would be law enforcement and healthcare, stay as is. And I believe in fully supporting them. And as far as chopping goes, like the example I gave earlier, Leisure Square Pool, I would need to take, you need to really be engaged in the, in the county commission budget. I know their workshop is coming up. I think it's the same days as mine, so I'll have to watch it on video after the fact. But you need to, you need to be really careful about chopping.
Thank you. Bob, you have any thoughts? Or do you want me to repeat?
One thing, clearly, we're seeing a drop in sales tax revenue and tourist tax revenue. Sales tax revenue is generally devoted to capital expenditure. So I think you have to look at that budget extremely carefully and see what things can be deferred out to future years. Is there any maintenance which is not absolutely necessary that we could chop out of the general fund? In general, in general, I'm not in favor of deferring maintenance too long, but the reality is, is that the amount of grants from both Tallahassee as well as from DC is going to be cut. So we're going to have to look at all those programs very carefully. And then the other thing is looking at various departments, making sure that we're measuring the productivity and that we're devoting the right resources. And maybe there's opportunities there to trim things down. We did that, I did that, for example, at Indian River Shores with the building department. We came up with a lot of analysis of different statistics which showed where there was productivity and where there wasn't. And we were able to reduce the usage of temporary building inspectors compared to what had been done previously.
Thanks, Bob. Steve?
Thank you. I think the most important thing when you go to look at a budget and what to do with it is, one, determining your revenues that are coming in and how they will affect the budget and see what can be deferred without creating a problem or, you know, degrading the quality of whatever the department is or building or so on and so forth. But to me, the most important part of streamlining the budget is determining the efficiency of the various departments. Because, you know, I've always been a firm believer that county government oftentimes is a little bit too top-heavy. And that's the very first place that I would start to look. And I would take a good look at it and determine what can we do to improve the efficiency in each department and what is necessary to do that. And it may be, well, that you can go along fine with fewer people as long as they're better trained or trained to do more than one job.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, next question, we'll start with Bob. There recently have been discussions regarding potential development of 25,000 rural acres in southwest Indian River County. That's in the St. John's Improvement District. And 2,000 rural acres south of Sebastian. That doesn't even include Felsmer, which basically stretches from State Road 60 to the North County line. What are your thoughts on how this might play out and how the county commission can help manage this growth?
Okay, well, I think it's very important we continue to have growth in the, in the economy here. I know there's some people here that say, I'm here, I want to pull up the ladder and not let anybody else come in. If you don't continue to grow in a smart, controlled manner, where you're not putting pressure on the environment, then you're not going to be attractive to younger people here. We don't want to have a county where the entire population is, is over 65. We have to have job opportunities and how, importantly, housing opportunities for, for people with affordable housing. I don't know if you're going to answer, ask that question later on, but that's clearly a big problem here in, in this county. So you have to do it in, in a very smart and controlled way where, again, you don't impact the environment. You build, you build parks into these extensions and so forth, but you still have the opportunity to grow the economy.
Thanks, Bob. Steve?
Well, I've spent the last 36 years of my life studying growth as part of my business, and growth is inevitable. And as I've always told people over the years, Florida's like a glass of water, and it's filling from the bottom up. And basically, on the East Coast, Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach Counties are built out to the limits of basically the Everglades or the catchment areas. So with that being said, you know, growth is something that is very important to me because we are going to have it, but we need to protect the environment, and we have to protect the quality of life. And this can be done through proper planning of both the, by the county and the developers and making sure that the county or the commissioners make approved plans that are fundamentally sound for the safety of the people and for the environment.
Thanks, Steve. Laura?
Yes, thank you. You know, of course, we'll have growth. We're a very, very attractive place, and even more so now in the current context. But it needs to be smart growth, and I think part of the way that can be achieved is, you know, partnerships, better relationships. And by that, I mean with the county, between the county commission and the municipalities, between the county commission and the people, between the county commission and nonprofit environmental groups. Sebastian is, the Sebastian Annexation, unfortunately, is an example of that, of poor communication and lack of facilitation with regard to addressing everyone's concerns and implementing it in a proper manner. It ended up in a lawsuit, which to me is always a worst-case scenario. And that frankly never should have happened. I already have relationships, for example, with, you know, I know them from Florida cities, Dodge, and Hill, Bob Hartman while he was there. I, I know the Audubon Society, Dr. Baker. I mean, what I've been, I just want to be ahead of it, be ahead of it. I mean, that's how, that's how I get the sale done, be, be ahead of it. And you, and you might recall, you know, that was, there was multiple lawsuits at that time when I came in. But you need to talk to everyone, you need to understand and be able to see all sides of it. You don't want to be talking down to people, and that happened, by, by the way, and it's a matter of public record, and I was really sorry to be a witness to that. But that happened, the talking down to people. I think it was an MPO meeting last August. It's a special call, MPO meeting to talk about the Sebastian Annexation. And frankly, I felt like I was witnessing this Spanish imposition. I mean, that was a, that was really a low moment. I didn't participate. It wasn't, it wasn't about Barrow Beach, it was about Sebastian. But the, the, the way it was handled, in my opinion, was totally inappropriate. And you really want to be sure that you have good partnership, you have good relationships in advance. And then as situations arise, it makes it much easier to be sure that everything goes smoothly and correctly as possible. And then the community understands too. You need to be able to explain to the community what the value of it is, what the importance of it is, and what they're, and you need to take from them their concerns about it and put it all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, we'll start with Steve on this question. Can you please give one example of what you have done in the past six months that proves you are doing more than just talk about helping the Indian River Lagoon?
First of all, I've lived on the lagoon for the last 20 years, and I have a live shoreline. I do my best to constantly re-nurse the oysters that live down along my shoreline. But, you know, that's just something that I've done personally because I've watched the seagrass die over the last 20 years, and I've watched the water go from brown to, or excuse me, from blue to brown. What I've also done is I've become more involved with the different organizations and got, got to know a lot of the people who are working to save the Indian River Lagoon. And unfortunately, in my opinion, our county has been behind on two of the most important things. And one of them is storage of runoff and preventing the water from going into the Indian River Lagoon. And two has been the septic tank conversion. And so I've really focused recently on finding out who's involved with that, what studies have been done, and what can I do when I get elected to bring this to the forefront and start making sure that these programs, that these other nonprofits are working on, get instituted and get properly funded.
Thanks, Steve. Laura, do you want me to repeat the question, or you could?
No, thank you. I think, I think I'm good on that. In the last few weeks, I was happy to be a partner with Coastal Connections, and by that, I mean the City of Barrow Beach, and Coastal Connections, a Kendra Clubs organization, installed the litter basket program at the beach, which is very popular. It was publicized. And I think it was a week before that, or two weeks before that, Daisy Packer with Keep, Keep Indian River Beautiful had a beach cleanup, and that was on, that was at South Beach. Oh, that's right. And I also attended a beach cleanup of Coastal Connections. Well, this is all within the last few weeks, in my calendar with me. But, but that, you know, that's, that's personally, that's, you know, doing that as a person and also representing the city with Coastal Connections. But with regard, with regard to the city, Audubon is, has been very important to me and helpful to me in transforming landscape, literally, of the property surrounding City Hall. For anyone who doesn't know, you're welcome to come visit. I give tours, I do indoor outdoor tours. Because what we did was, we removed the lawn entirely, moved the lawn from the property at City Hall and replaced it with native and Florida French clients and rain gardens. Because I think, you know, you can't ask the community anything that you are not doing. I think it's, one of the roles of government is to set a good example. And I would fully intend to do that and to be that and to live that every day, as I'm doing with this. And in addition to that, as you know, Three Corners Property is, is in play, shall be fair. And for those who might not know, there's a steering committee, and all of the city councils on the steering committee, and each of us had the opportunity to appointee. And my appointee to that steering committee is Dr. Richard Baker, who has been president of the Palcoada Audubon Society for 20 years. I mean, he's a real leader. But my concern, and the reason why I appointed him, asked him to do it, was to do that job or engage that position, is my main concern with that is do no harm. I'm sitting right there on the lagoon, and, you know, we were talking earlier about development, and of course, it will be developed, but we want to be sure we do no harm. And I'll, I'll close with this, because this is something that it's, it's not, no photographs were taken. It wasn't a public meeting, but the city manager was there. And this is what I did, and this is what I was talking about earlier, but you have to create relationships and build bonds before you have a crisis, before you have any kind of concerns. And what I did was, I invited Daisy Packer, Keep Indian River Beautiful, the Indian River County Order Club, Dr. Baker, Audubon Society, and Monty Falls, our city manager, and myself. And this was, unfortunately, this was right before COVID hit because I planned to make this a regular program, and we're going to meet regularly because they get, you know, we can get grants, they can get grants. We can do a lot of different things when we're working together. So that already happened. That's, but it's not something that's, the newspaper didn't report it, no, no photographs were taken. But everybody was there, and that's what I would hope to do. I would hope to do going forward. I've already done it. I mean, you just, you know, you keep it, you start it early and make, make those partnerships and make those relationships before.
Thanks, Laura. Bob, would you like to answer the question?
Three things come to mind right off the top of my head. First of all, I was a strong proponent of the old Winter Beach Road project here in Indian River Shores. That area used to flood, you used to have water just pour into the lagoon where it did not have an opportunity to either percolate into the ground or sit in a storage unit to try to get the phosphates and nitrogens out. That's the first thing. And in preparation for running for county commissioner, I asked the director of utility services in the county to give me a tour of the county's water, potable water and treatment systems to try to understand all the issues that are involved there, to give me a grounding of what was going on. And then finally, I'd say my work on the, on the utilities commission. I continue to be the vice chairman of that commission. I'm the town of Indian River Shores representative. I was the one that brought the Department Environmental Protection report to the public. That report stated that the city of Vera Beach Water System, the Potable Water System, was quote, "in pitiful condition." Now, think about it, if you've ever read bureaucratic reports, they tend to be pretty subtle in the way they said that. I brought that up, and unfortunately, the city of Vera Beach Council, including my opponent, they never even discussed this issue there. So I was very disappointed in that. And so, but I'm going to continue to work to try to clean up the water systems.
Thanks, Bob. We'll start with Laura on this one. What should the county's top three priorities be when it comes to road improvements? Say, white or creation? If there are gasoline tax revenue shortfalls, how would you handle the situation?
Well, I do get a lot of complaints about potholes, because people, when I said earlier that everything's Vera Beach, it wasn't a slight to Sebastian, please don't take it that way, it's just that people think they live in the city, and they don't, so I get a lot of complaints about, about potholes. But, you know, I think we need to be really careful about traffic management, and we're not, and that's, let me just say one thing about the water of Vera Beach, let me defend our water, and then I'll go back to that. I drink the water, you know, okay, my jacket's green, but I'm not. And I did ask the director, our director of water and sewer, about that, and he assures me that the water quality is fine, and we have discussed it publicly. Anyway, to get back to your question, we need to be really careful, not only beyond the potholes, traffic management, traffic safety, we are growing, as we said earlier. And I think with MPO, one thing that we need to have that we don't have right now, that I would look to change if you're in county commission, is we need to make sure we have funds to address problems before they begin. We know, for example, and I'll give you an example, specific example. The city of Vera Beach just annexed, as I'm sure you know, but perhaps listeners don't, just annexed the property north of the city on A1A, right, that was referred to as the tracking station. And Kim Lee Bourne had already done a traffic study that said that was, there was going to be an impact, and that the, the intersection, well, A1A, Seventeenth Street Bridge, it's already failing, and that's their word. Okay, that's, that's a traffic study word, that's not my word. So I, I, I asked at MPO about this, and was told, well, that's, you know, that's, that's not our concern. And I, I don't, I don't not really understand that, and I don't agree with it. I think we need to have at least part of the budget there appropriated toward preventing problems, you know, not just solving them. Some of these things, you can, you can see it coming, and, and you should, you should, you need to be ahead of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Bob, would you like me to repeat the question, or you have it?
No. I'm chairman of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's probably the most important body in the county that nobody has ever heard of. Every county in the country has to have one in order to get federal highway and transit aid money. So the reason why I want to be the chairman on that, because I have an interest in transportation programs. I think a priority is to continue to make sure that the funding is available for the I-95 exit at the Oslo Road. I think that in the western part of the county, to be able to expand some of these north-south roads, the two lanes, is extremely important. The other thing that I would like to do as a priority, you know, in transportation, there's something called the County Greenlight Plan. That was done back in 2007 to try to expand the bicyclist network through the county, whereby there was a very involved study that looked at opportunities to build bike paths along some of the main relief canal, the southern relief canal. It would create a lot of opportunities for recreation in the county, and, and probably more importantly, it would serve those who are economically disadvantaged, who frankly, get the work, get the stores, get the other things like that, utilizing their bikes. It would make it a lot safer for them. So I thought that's a twofer, and if I'm on county commission, I'm going to bring that up again, maybe update it for, over the la, for, you know, the last thirteen years of things that are going on, because I think bicycle safety is very important. Just quickly, FDOT is resurfacing A1A through Indian River Shores all the way up to the 510. They're not going to put seven-foot bike lanes along the entire stretch. I was the one that convinced them to do that, even though that quote violated their streets manual by getting them to lower the speed limit. And somebody would say, oh, that's easy lowering the speed limit. Try to get FDOT to lower speed limit because they're concerned about traffic. So I just don't talk the talk, I walk the walk.
Thanks, Bob. Steve?
Over the last thirty six years of my career, and as a matter of fact, I started my career with the Florida Department of Transportation, working with road right-of-way projects. And I think the first thing that we need to do is always look at safety. So this means all the roads that are service level D or F need to get priority, because those always create safety and traffic issues. Second thing that we need to do is I, with the money, is make sure that if the train's coming through, that all of our crossings are as safe as possible, and we're going to have to find out what money is going to be provided by the federal government, the state government, and then how much the county will have to spend, because this is going to become a very, very important issue in the future. Ever since I came to this county back in the early eighties, I've worked with the county itself regarding the right-of-way acquisition for the expansion of Fifty-Eighth Avenue, State Road Sixty out to the Turnpike. As a matter of fact, when I first came here, one of the first things I got involved with was I was hired by a property owner to find out about the Oslo Road Interchange back in the eighties, and I found out at that time, the county had taken it off the ten-year plan, so the DOT removed it from their ten-year plan. So again, I think we need to make sure that that's funded and pushed forward, because that involves safety of evacuation and servicing the south end of the county, which is ultimately going to grow, and it'll keep the roads safer.
Thanks, Steve. I think I may have time for one or two more questions. I'm going to ask this of Bob, we'll start with Bob on this one. Can you please succinctly give a specific example of a time when you achieved a long-term professional goal that required collaboration with others?
Are you referring to in government, outside of government?
It's up to you, it's up to you, but just something where you had to collaborate with others to achieve that.
Certainly, okay. Well, I'll give you my experience as being the chairman of the school board audit committee. I and my four fellow members analyzed how much the school board attorney was getting paid. She currently receives $264,000 a year. Just to put that in context, the vice president of the United States only gets $231,000 and change, U.S. Attorney General only gets $211,000 and change. I provided information to the other members of the school board audit committee, looking at the, what other school board attorneys were paid around the state, and we determined that we were at the very high-end, extreme end of the range. So work with them, I got them to endorse the idea that the school board should put an RFP out, and then, and we recommended that five to nothing. That was May of 2018. Nothing was done on our current school board. Fortunately, the school board changed over, and in this situation, I was able to go back again, make the same presentation, talk with some of the school board members one-on-one, and currently, the RFP is putting it out. Hopefully, we'll get a much cheaper price. We can take that money and use it to teach our kids rather than burn money up paying lawyers.
Thanks, Bob. Steve?
Well, I guess you want to know what my long-term professional goal has been or achievement has been? I think my biggest one is, besides being married to my lovely wife for almost forty years now, it's been running a business in this county for over thirty-five years, and during that time, I've had to work with the various agencies, including the Florida Department of Transportation, South Florida and St. John's Water Management Districts, the Department of Environmental Protection, the Florida Inland Navigational District, the FAA, Florida Communities Trust, the Indian River Land Trust, and so on and so forth. And my goal, achievement, has been keeping these people as a client and working with them for the last thirty-five years.
Okay. Laura? Would you like to answer that?
Yes, of course. I was elected in 2016 as the mayor with a mandate, and I'm not saying that about myself. This was reported by S&amp;P, Global Market Intelligence, and that has to do with the electric sale. Became mayor in November of 2016, and I signed the contract for the sale the following October, October of 2017. And that involved, for those who might not recall or didn't know, that involved six different parties, and the lawsuits were flying fast and furious. The six different parties were FMPA, FPL, OUC, Orlando Utilities Commission, the city, county, and Indian River Shores. I won't leave anybody out. So when I arrived, literally, no one was speaking to each other. That was the case. I confirmed that with Dylan Ryan Ball, God bless him, he was trying to get, he couldn't get people on the phone. So I became the FMPA representative, that was by vote of city council, and went up there, and that's a little like the UN, you know, it's, it's thirty, thirty-one cities, and you're representing Vera Beach, and guess what? Yeah, we didn't like them, they didn't like us either. So it was my job to, to repair that relationship. So I know I've spent time speaking earlier about establishing good relationships, good partnerships, but sometimes you come into a situation you didn't create, you had, you had nothing to do with, and it's about as bad as it can be, it's a total, it's at a dead stall, and how do you fix it? And, and you fix it with, with the same skills that it takes to create good relationships in the first place. I mean, I fixed it literally by listening to the thirty-some-odd cities individually, you know, established relationships with them, and over time, you know, you see their side of it, and, and, and gain their confidence, and, and promote your side of it, and there's, and there's always a way to do that. You always should, you need to be able to see every side of it and be able to move forward to a position that is good for everyone. That's, you know, that's, that's how, that's how it works. That's, that's optimal, and that's the metrics the light should be. So that's, I'm very proud of that conversation.
Thank you. Gil, would you have any questions for anybody?
I think you've covered most of the ground that I was interested in, Larry. I was going to ask about, for fiscal issues, in terms of the impact of COVID-19 potentially on the county's budget, what do you think that's going to be? How are you going to, how would you manage that going forward?
So that would be for Steve would be the first question there, I guess. Steve can answer that first.
I think it's circle back a little bit to what we discussed before. There, there's no doubt that everybody's predicting there's going to be a drop in the tax revenue that's come in as a result of tourist tax and so on and so forth. I have noticed that the hotels and out at the beach have been relatively full, if not a hundred percent full, as a result of people escaping from South Florida. So I hope the revenues aren't as, down as far as everybody is predicting. But again, if revenues are down, you need to take the necessary steps to determine where can you cut or control expenses, but not reduce the productivity of what needs to be done.
Thanks, Laura.
I'd love to address it in a creative fashion, and by that, I mean, I gave as an example the meeting I had with Audubon, City of Vera Beach, Keep Indian River Beautiful, and the Garden Club. And sometimes, you know, there, there are projects that you can do jointly that they, they have funding for or that you have funding for, and if you combine forces, so to speak, with nonprofits and other entities beyond government, I would, I would go looking for that. You know, I, I think I'm aware of several opportunities now, and I would, I would seek to do that, to, to extend the budget by extending relationships with parties outside the county commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, I would reference my answer earlier in terms of particularly on the capital expenditure side. I, I think what is important is, we could have multiple waves of this. I mean, we're going through one right now, as I mentioned on my earlier answers, and I hope, you know, that a vaccine comes out or other mitigation factors. So this is going to have to be a continual process. And what I am going to rely upon is the financial analytical skills that I developed in running for Vanguard, $750 billion over my career of bond and money market assets and managing a hundred and twenty-five-person management group. Not only did I have to run the group in an efficient way, I also have a lot of financial skills. I've looked at every type of municipal bond that has been ever issued, I've bought billions of dollars of them, I know my way around income statement and balance sheet, and I'm going to use those to continue to look to trim if we're in a situation where we don't get out of this, because the state of Florida has cut their budget by about a billion dollars from the one that Governor DeSantis originally got. I think that's going to be way too small of a cut. I think, I had read one piece from the Florida Economic Institute that said, as of a month ago, that sales, tax, and tourism revenues were running $700 million a month below forecast. So we're, we're going to probably end up chopping more as we go along, and we're not going to be able to get much help from Tallahassee or from D.C.
Thanks, Bob. Luis, do you have any questions? You good?
I'm good.
Okay, Terry?
Yeah, interesting. It seems like all three candidates are supporting additional salaries and benefits for the fire responders, and so I'm not sure if I should interpret that to understand a tax increase to pay for those salaries and benefits. And then kind of along the same line, if the sheriff's department were to request a tax or mileage increase to pay for body cameras, would that be, you know, a yes vote or a no vote for the three candidates? So I don't know if you, if all three, you can respond saying yes on increasing taxes or no on increasing taxes for those particular parts of the budget.
Laura?
Time to increase taxes. I just, I, I, I don't see that. I mean, the time, time that I spend out with the community, communications I receive from the community, the high level of uncertainty, we have businesses that are going out of business. I don't think this is the time, I would say no to an increase in taxes. It would have to be done another way.
Okay, Bob?
With regard to the fire department, what, what are productivity gains can we get out of the budget by not constantly training people? I referenced my previous answer where I said, you know, the general rule of thumb in business is twenty percent of a person's first year salary is spent on training, prominent case of firefighters, that continues to continue for a number of years, probably the lesser percentage. You know, with the sheriff's office, the reality is, the county commissioners really don't have very much influence on that budget. They're a constitutional officer, and they can set their own budget. The county administrator tries to work with them, but they aren't but they are an independently elected office. So if they want to go with body cameras, then we're going to have to, you know, see what that's going to end up costing and the impact on tax rates.
Steve?
Well, again, to reiterate my previous stance on it, you know, safety and first responders is all part of the quality of life that we all enjoy here in Indian River County. And, you know, it's kind of like boating. Sometimes you have to pay to play. And I would be in favor of supporting increases in pay for them if that's what it would take to bring a more efficient department where we would save money in the long run.
Thanks Steve. We're running out of time here, so we're going to go, if you have anything that you haven't mentioned today that you would like to mention. Bob, we'll go with you first. I would ask you to keep it concise. And then we'll go to Steve and Laura to end it out.
Okay. You know, when you're looking at the candidates, what I think is important for the voter to look at, what has that person accomplished? And who are their supporters? The Taxpayers Association of Indian River County, December 2018, gave me their fiscal conservative of the year award in recognition of the activities that I had done to save money for taxpayers across the entire county. It's a very smart organization and I'm extremely proud of that. I also, I asked the voters to look at the list of excellent leaders who've endorsed my candidacy. Former Florida Governor Jeb Bush, Indian River County Commissioner Bob Solari, Felsmere Mayor Joel Tyson, Indian, former Mayor Plar Turner, and the man who is responsible for first starting the effort to get Vera Beach out of the electric utility business, Dr. Stephen Farady. And Glenn Hearn, who was the other person, is the treasurer of my campaign. These are well-respected leaders who have supported my candidacy. In fact, they reached out to me to run. I had not planned to run. And they, particularly Commissioner Solari and Glenn Hearn, asked me to run given that Bob was retiring. So with those type of endorsements, I think that says something about the record of things that I have been able to accomplish here in the county. And I would just remind everybody that regardless of where you live in the county, you can vote for me even though I'm running for county commissioner, District 5. And you can be a Democrat, you can be a nonpartisan, you can cross over and vote for me. And I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thanks Bob. Steve?
I think the most important thing that I bring to the table as a candidate is that I've been a resident here for over 35 years. I've run a business here for over 35 years. I've raised my children here. I have my grandchildren here. And I've worked in the community and with the various governmental agencies for the whole period of time. And my whole campaign platform is based around the quality of life. And that's, that's what we need to protect in Indian River County. And my main pillar, of course, was of my platform, was to clean up the Indian River Lagoon, which I'm very passionate about. VoteWater.org has endorsed me because of my environmental policies. The Treasure Coast Builders Association has endorsed me because I understand growth, but I understand how it has to be handled to maintain the quality of life. And the Board of Realtors has also endorsed me because of my long-time work and involvement with them. So I think what I bring to the county commission is a thorough working knowledge of the county and of what the people want and need and what we need to do to maintain the quality of life here. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Laura?
Thank you. Well, I have not sought any endorsements from bigwigs or special interests. Really, the only endorsement, and I'm speaking to the community now, the only endorsement I need is from you people. That's all I ever seek, seek to serve. And I've mentioned this in other forums, but since I was elected in November of 2016, every day when I'm out in the public, I wear my official name badge. So people know who I am. And again, this is getting ahead of it. If there's a problem, people let me know. They're always free to comment, suggestions. That's how I know what people are thinking, what their concerns are, and perhaps even how we should proceed. I get a lot of good ideas from people. But I'm also well-prepared. I've been on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee since 2016, the Metropolitan Planning Organization since 2016, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council since 2018. Recently, I'm serving on the Tourist Development Council and that's been very interesting. So I've, you know, I've been on the inside of a number of these advisory boards. And by the way, for those of you that know, they are advisory boards to the county commission. So I've developed that insight and that experience. And as far as awards go, well, you know, in addition to the electric sale, which I consider my greatest accomplishment, on the soft side, more recently, I got an award from Pelican Island Audubon Society. This is in 2020. And that's the president's award. But I also got one, and this is the sweetest, dearest one to me. In 2017, I got the hometown, I was the mayor, I got the hometown hero award from St. Helen County School. And I was the only politician. It was all, they invited, there was more than one hometown hero. But they were all first responders except me. And that was, I will never forget that moment. They actually, they're second graders. And they actually, it was a group hug, about 20 or 30 of them. I was wearing Aloha heels and they actually lifted me off the floor with a group hug. I'm sorry you weren't there to get a picture. But that's the power of the people. They literally raise you up. It was amazing. Thank you.
So that's cool. Well, I appreciate everybody taking the time to join us today. Appreciate again, your questionnaires. And just running, I think, is an important thing for our community, each of you. Putting your heart and soul into trying to serve our community. So thank you for doing that. And we'll be in touch with you later. But thank you for joining us and follow TC Palm for the latest on the elections in Indian River County.